You're welcome.
How you doing? Good.
And then you didn't need anything from us on the last case, right?
No.
Okay, okay.
The Waldrecker is coming for that one.
Okay.
It's basically just a stopgap.
Okay.
Since the state put into their budget bill that if you don't ban it by July one, you can never ban it.
Oh.
Yeah. Interesting.
Okay.
Have that same one.
Yeah. Hmm, okay. Yeah, that's what I was confused why it pop- why it would pop up like that.
Dumb stuff like that. I mean, I know, I'm sure you do pay attention.
I- I pay attention.
Little slew of cities have just been banning it out, right?
Right.
Exactly why.
Yep.
Because I don't think our council is fully opposed to allow, we already have recreating.
Yeah.
Hello. How are you?
Hi.
You know, and this body recommended it be permitted.
Okay.
Council made the decision to not do it right now.
Gotcha. Okay.
Very good, thank you. Loving this weather.
Y'all are weak.
Nice. Oh, really? I love hot weather.
Oh, are you a warm weather type person?
Yeah. I'm a May baby, I like it hot.
I like it if we can go to the pool. I don't mind it there.
Oh yeah, that's- that's very nice. This is true. It is. It is. There are more coming.
Yeah.
Okay, great.
Awesome.
Great. And you are?
I'm Max.
Max?
I'm with McBride Delclarian, the planning consultant.
Oh, okay. Okay, great. Sabrina Pritchett.
Nice to meet you.
I'll introduce Max to the group.
Oh, okay. Well, he's sitting right next to me, so.
Oh, no.
Yeah.
Yeah, so when Seth left, so Seth Norman, who was here.
Yes, yes.
When he left, Delclarian and Max stepped in to fill those gaps for us.
Oh.
He's been doing a great job.
Wonderful.
Yes.
Great, great.
Happy to be here, so.
He came all the way from Cincinnati.
Yep.
Yeah.
Hello.
Well, then that's extra special.
Yeah. It wasn't too bad of a drive today.
Yeah. What time did you come- come out? When did you leave?
I left a little earlier than usual, right? Like four thirty.
Yeah.
Between four thirty and five, so.
Not too much of a hangup.
No.
Seventy-five just gives me angst.
Yeah, me too.
I made that drive every day for ten years.
Oh, gosh, really?
Wow.
Because I live up here and I was driving all the way down to Springdale.
Okay.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Okay. Yeah.
Yeah.
That's tough. We had a planner on our staff who was living in Cincinnati and driving to the city of Dayton every day for-
Oh, wow.
For a couple of years.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah.
Yeah, people do it.
People do it.
Yeah.
My girlfriend, she took a position with sorta, which is the-
Right.
Uh, you know, sorta.
Yeah.
And so she's driving from Clayton to Cincinnati every day.
Okay.
So she said to try to make sure her drive wasn't too bad. She gets to work like about seven or a quarter to seven. So she can leave out early before the rush hour traffic.
Yep.
So that's better at least.
Yeah.
Then you've got to get up some early.
Yes.
Right.
But it's worth it.
Yes. Yeah.
Well, good evening, everybody. Welcome to the, uh, welcome to the June twenty-third, twenty-twenty-five, uh, City of Clayton Planning Commission meeting. And I guess welcome to summer, too, right? It's pretty hot out there. I'm Dan Foley, I'm the, the chair of the, of the Planning Commission. And we have an agenda here that I think if, if everybody didn't get copies of that, um, I think we'll start by asking Barb to do roll call. We're going to swear, um, Kim Williams in, uh, as a, as a member of the Planning Commission tonight for her second term. So, Kim, go ahead and stand up. Do you want to go ahead and call roll?
Uh, Ms. Foley? Mr. Muncie?
Here.
Mr. Bills?
Here.
Ms. Pritchett?
Here.
Ms. Williams?
Here.
Great. All right, so what I'm going to do is I'm going to explain the procedures of the meeting, and I, um, you've got, you're all going to be, think that I'm a pretty boring person because I'm going to actually walk through them, but we need to do it because we, we need people to just understand what the, kind of the flow of the meeting. Maybe we'll do a video at some point, like they do on an airplane or something, I'm not sure, but. So I'll go ahead and call the agenda items and ask for staff to present the case. We will also administer, uh, the oath to members of the public who wish to speak on a, a particular agenda item. Uh, we'll ask the applicant, uh, if they would like to add anything to what the staff presented. Uh, the chair will ask the commission members if they have any questions of the staff or the applicant. Uh, the chair will ask for a motion, a second to open the floor for public comment. Um, and then the, uh, each member of the public has three minutes to, to talk about, you know, what your, um, uh, what your opinion is. And we would ask you to direct your comment to the Planning Commission and not directly to the applicant. Uh, once the floor has been closed to public comment, no additional comments can be made. The chair will ask for any public comment in favor or against the application. The chair will ask for a motion or a second to close the floor to public comment. And the chair will ask the applicant if they would like to rebut any of the comments that they felt, uh, maybe, um, they, they need to respond to. Uh, and then the chair will also ask for a motion, or, or the chair will ask for another, further discussion among commission members, and then, and then I would ask for a motion or a second to recommend approval, approval with conditions, or disapproval to the applicant's, uh, request. Uh, so I think, I think with that, Barb, we can go ahead. Um, should I administer the oath to members who want to speak right now? Okay, is this? Go ahead to the first agenda item. Um, and I think, um, uh, the first agenda item, actually, we have, um, we have no old business, so that, the three items are new business. The first one is PC twenty-five dash oh-two. Oh, yes? Oh, sorry, okay. Uh, my apologies. Uh, we need to approve the minutes for the March twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-five, uh, meetings, and I would, I would mention that I was not here that evening, so I can't vote on it, or I'll abstain. Uh, but, uh, ask, ask members if there's any suggested changes to the minutes. Okay. All right, do we hear a motion to approve?
I'll move to approve the March twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five Planning Commission meeting minutes.
Mr. Muncie? Do I hear a second? Okay.
A second.
Okay. Ms. Pritchett? Okay, it's been motioned and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Actually, I'm not voting. Uh, uh, it passes. Thank you, so the first, oh.
Vocal.
Okay, okay.
Mr. Bills?
Abstain. I wasn't here.
Okay. Mr. Foley?
Abstain.
Mr. Muncie?
Yes.
Ms. Pritchett?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, the first item, PC twenty-five oh-two, is a request for a preliminary subdivision plan and rezoning for the Westbrook Estates subdivision, a proposed residential subdivision. The request was made by Shanghai Enterprises LLC, um, the property owner.
Good evening, Planning Commission. Um, with us this evening, we have Max Merritt from McBride Del Clarion. Uh, when Mr. Dorman left the service of the city, McBride Del Clarion stepped in to fill that gap and review these larger projects for us. So Max is actually going to give the presentation this evening.
Oh, hold. Gotcha.
Okay, hold it.
Okay. 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 All right, thanks. Uh, thanks for the introduction. Um, I'm happy to be here and, um, happy to present these cases tonight. Uh, so the first case we have here, um, is a preliminary subdivision plan and rezoning. So the application was received, um, in May of this year. Uh, there is a proposed zoning district change, uh, from the original zoning designation, uh, RSD, which is residential, um, residential district to a planned development district. This is a proposed preliminary plan, uh, which is kind of the initial phase, um, uh, for the property. Uh, the applicant is American Structure Point, and the property owner is Shanghai Enterprises. Uh, this is a thirty-acre site, uh, with no structures present at the moment. Uh, and the approximate location of the property is near the intersection of East Westbrook Road, uh, and Teywood Road, just down the road there. Uh, so here's the general location, uh, just down the road there. Uh, there's a couple of different intersecting roads, uh, which connect to the site currently. Here's the surrounding zoning. We have residential, uh, single-unit district to the east and the north. Uh, we have residential, or mixed district to the west. Uh, this commercial district to the southwest of the property, um, near Westbrook and Teywood. And then here are a couple, um, other surrounding properties, uh, worth noting, including the golf course, um, across Teywood Road. Uh, we have Metta Brook Apartments, um, another apartment complex south of that. Um, and then that commercial property I mentioned, uh, just south of that. Uh, here is the preliminary development plan. Uh, this is a one-hundred-three lot subdivision proposal. You'll see the, to the north and the east is, is single-family residential, and then to the west, there's different, a mix of uses there. Um, to the south is also single-family. Um, in the center, there's open space proposed, um, and then to the south of the site is a retention pond. Uh, so, like I just said, the current zoning is residential, single-unit district. They're proposing to, um, change it to planned development district. Um, and here is a summary of the property there, so one-hundred-three single-family homes proposed, uh, for, with a total of five-point-nine acres of open space, which is about twenty percent of the site. And then that rounds out to about five and a half lots per acre. Uh, there's access proposed via extensions of Ponderosa Lane to the north, Orin Road to the east, and then one new access point from Teywood Road to the west. Um, some of the amenities included, uh, that are proposed is a playground or a recreation area, uh, within that central open space area. And then the addition of a multi-use path proposed, um, along Westbrook Road, uh, which is consistent with the comprehensive plan. There's new infrastructure proposed for the property, including streets, sidewalks, lighting, and a multi-use path. Uh, water and sewer proposed to be serviced by Montgomery County, um, the city of Dayton. Electric provided by AES, gas by Centerpoint Energy. Uh, we received comments, uh, and agency reviews, uh, from the city of Clayton, uh, and the engineering consultant, uh, which you can see there. The police and service department both noted, uh, it suggested that modifications in the future, uh, to the intersection of Westbrook and Teywood, uh, be incorporated. Uh, there's also drainage concerns with the property along Westbrook Road, uh, from the engineering consultant and the service department. Um, and they would like to explore additional downstream improvements. Um, and as of right now, the applicant has addressed the engineer's comments, um, and the engineering consultants, uh, for the preliminary phase of this project. Um, here's just another map to give you a, a different look at the site, to show you where that open space and retention pond is, uh, including the connections, the proposed road connections to the property. And then looking at Plan Clayton, the city's adopted comprehensive plan, the future land use, uh, is single-family homes. That is what is proposed for the property. And then looking at the, uh, the Clayton zoning ordinance, um, reviewing chapter eleven-eleven-twenty-one for the planned development district, um, and reviewing the different criteria, uh, that we look at, uh, to see if it's consistent with the zoning code. The proposal includes lot widths, which are approximately, uh, ten feet shorter than the base residential district requirement. Um, so that's the original zoning. However, under planned development, uh, they are allowed to change the lot sizes and propose changes to that, um, to meet their needs. Uh, under be there, the development standards, um, the planning, planning staff has determined that they generally conform to the standards, um, as outlined within the zoning code. Um, however, there are items that need to be addressed, um, as part of a final development plan. Uh, there was no development schedule provided, um, and that will be, uh, required as part of a final development plan. Uh, the plan will not jeopardize public health, safety, and morals. No off-site improvements were determined to be necessary as a result of the traffic study, uh, which is one item. And then comments from Clayton Fire Department and Clayton Police Department, uh, were provided. Uh, proposed covenants will also be required as part of a final development plan. Uh, and then finally, the proposed use is compatible with the surrounding land uses, uh, which are residential to the north and east, uh, multifamily and commercial to the west, uh, residential to the south. Uh, further, uh, the area requirements, the proposed development, um, is on approximately thirty acres, which meets the minimum, uh, needed to, uh, convert the property to a planned development. Uh, under planning requirements, um, you'll see, we, we don't have many concerns, uh, we just have notes here. Uh, utilities and public facilities are provided. The development will provide a harmonious grouping of structures, uses, and facilities, um, and open spaces provided. Off-street parking will also be provided. Um, further, looking at the goals of Plan Clayton, um, I think are really important, um, in this case, especially looking at planned developments. Um, and we found that, you know, not everything, not every single goal is going to apply, um, to development projects. Um, however, we found that goal one, uh, applies best to this project, which is to create walkable neighborhoods. Um, this is emphasized throughout the comprehensive plan. And the proposed development includes sidewalks on both sides of the street, uh, with a planting strip between the street and the walkways. Um, however, with that being said, the nearest sidewalk network, um, to, uh, you know, basically tie in the development with the existing sidewalk network, uh, where people primarily walk, um, throughout the neighborhood, is about two, there's about a two-hundred-foot gap, uh, north along Ponderosa. And, uh, there's a sidewalk stub proposed up to the edge of the development. Um, however, um, we suggest that, uh, off-site improvements, um, be considered in this case to make that connection, make that sidewalk connection along the, um, two properties, uh, at the intersection of Ponderosa and Lynchmere. Uh, here's a visual to show you, uh, where that is. The image on the left there is Lynchmere Drive, uh, Ponderosa intersects with it. And so the stubs, uh, work their way up to that southern property line there. Um, however, the sidewalks are, are on the, uh, opposite side of Lynchmere. Um, and then the other example on the right side there, um, is to show you that, um, where there are sidewalk stubs proposed on the east side of the property line, um, there are no sidewalks, um, along that portion, uh, so it wouldn't make a lot of sense to, um, ask for them to extend sidewalks there, um, or, uh, to, uh, Teywood, uh, where it's the same situation. Um, further, uh, further, we also ask that they, uh, make modifications to the plan to, um, allow for, uh, key entrances to the, uh, open space, um, and that you consider the off-site improvements for that sidewalk connection. Um, and so one other element, uh, which is not included in the presentation, but, uh, street trees, um, are a part of the comprehensive plan, and it's encouraged, uh, in the city of Clayton. Uh, we recommend that, uh, you also require street trees as part of a final development plan. And then here's slide about next steps. Um, the Planning Commission, uh, will make a recommendation to city council, uh, where they'll hold a public hearing, make a final determination on the prelim plan. Uh, and then if it's approved by city council, the applicant will then be asked to submit a final plan. Uh, and then final plans and, uh, plat submission will require certain additional information that's not included, um, at this preliminary step, um, including a completed traffic study, um, and a development plan set, um, including all, uh, building details, utilities, grading, stormwater, stormwater and drainage, uh, landscape, a landscaping plan, uh, details for any amenities that are proposed. Uh, and so with that, we have a staff recommendation, um, after evaluating the request, that we recommend, uh, the Planning Commission make a motion to, uh, approve the preliminary subdivision plan and rezoning requests, uh, with the following conditions. The applicant shall submit detailed amenity and landscape plans with final subdivision plan. A playground or park location and equipment in the open space areas shall be coordinated with the city. Street tree and pedestrian infrastructure requirements shall be addressed per Plan Clayton guidance. Uh, all engineering consultant comments shall be resolved prior to final plan approval. And coordination with city and county agencies shall be required with final subdivision plan. So with that, that's all I've got. I'm going to open the floor to the Planning Commission.
Is the applicant here? Would you, uh, would the applicant, uh, want to add anything to what, what staff presented? Give your name and address, too, as a starter, that'd be great.
Ben Schilling, one-twenty-two South Otterby in Westerville, Ohio. Um, yeah, I think that was a great summary. Um, I don't think there's any of the recommendations or comments from, from staff or otherwise that we don't intend on addressing. So, I guess, to, to knock out the easy ones first, um, the sidewalk connectivity, we have no problem that, with that, we think that's a logical thing to do, is to make those sidewalk connections, um, to the north, um, along Ponderosa. is to make those sidewalk connections to the north along Ponderosa. We're happy to address the fire department's concerns. We are just in these preliminary stages, so the hydrant layouts still need to happen, and those will be coordinated with the fire department. Like the gentleman pointed out, we are proposing a multi-use path along the north side of Westbrook. And along with that, we are dedicating right-of-way as well to encompass that. We have performed a traffic impact study for the project that has been reviewed and accepted by Kleinger's Group, the consultant. There were no off-site improvements that were warranted as part of the development. That said, we understand that there's a concern about that intersection that's kind of a little bit offset with Salem Road to the south. So, we're happy to, to discuss that further, once we get to that point. It sounded like that may be something that happens later down the road during the final development stage. But, yeah, I think that's, that's some, a discussion that we're open to. Maybe most importantly, I imagine there's some folks here from the adjacent neighborhoods who experience, on a semi-regular basis, the flooding that happens. There's about 30 feet of fall across the site. So, you have all of this water coming downhill to the east up against some of these residences. So, we do see that, and we want to take care of it. The intent is to design swales and sewers in our side yards, or rear yards, I guess, such that it could carry the 100-year event down to our basins and along the north side of Westbrook. We also acknowledge that there are likely some improvements that need to be made to the, to the north side of Westbrook. There are some very shallow swales there currently, and some small culverts under each of the driveways. So, we acknowledge that those are probably a little bit underdesigned at this point, and we certainly don't want to make a bad condition worse. So, we're happy to look into that. We've already started looking into that. And I think there's, there's an opportunity for a, a good improvement here for, for the, for the neighborhood and for the road. And then, I would also just, maybe lastly, like to speak to the, the fact that we are applying for a rezoning, and we are asking for reduced lot width. That is, the normal RSD is 60 feet, correct? We're asking to go down to 52. When you kind of look at the adjacent areas, some of the existing homes, lots to the north and to the east, it's easy to, like, be a little bit shell-shocked at how different the size of our lots are versus theirs. But I think the majority of the lots, even though they are in RSD to our east and to our north, they are much larger than what RSD requires. They're actually between 80 and over 100 feet wide. So, the visuals are a little bit difficult to, to grasp, but in reality, we are, I believe, asking for a minor reduction. And that, in effect, allows us to create, create more density. There's a sewer that runs through the property that kind of creates some awkward layouts. So, by having the reduced lot sizes, we're able to be more efficient with our layout. And then, I think it's also just an affordability aspect to it as well. We're trying to bring housing, and in order to make this pencil, the reduced lot sizes allow us to do that. So, I think that's all that I have. But we're happy to address any concerns or questions that you have. And I have with me here the property owner, Mr. Jason Liu. Jason is a restaurant owner in Columbus. He's been actively involved in his community for, for many, many years. And he's experienced in land development as well, has several active projects going on, and many successful ones in his past. So, I'm sure he'd be happy to answer any questions you have as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schilling. I think what we'll do next is we'll ask the commission members if they have any questions of either staff or, or the applicant.
Got a couple. You mentioned the right-of-way requirement. I know that the, it sounds like the Montgomery County Comprehensive Plan asks for 45 feet, but it looks like on their renderings, they only have 40 feet. Was that, is that something that's been reconciled? Or is this something we're looking towards the final development plan to have on there?
So, if you're talking about the, like, the thoroughfare, is that what you're talking about? So, the city now has its own thoroughfare plan. We accepted one. But yes, it'll be reconciled with the final plan.
Then, what, do we have a minimum standard for open space requirement, like percentage based on?
I don't know it off the top of my head. I'm sure we do. It's part of planned developments.
The, I think the development's also asking for a setback reduction in compared to the, to the RSD requirement. Is the normal setback 10 feet?
It is for RSD.
And I think this development plan asks for six feet.
Yes.
Setback plus the eight-foot reduction.
In the side yard?
Yeah. Are there any other departures from the RSD zoning other than the side yard and the lot width?
Those are it.
The, so the traffic impact study that was sent to us, is that considered the final traffic impact study? Or are we expecting something else on top? Because I know there's some questions about the methodology. Trying to look through it all, I don't know if all the questions were answered.
So, Kleinger's has accepted their, their traffic study.
At the very end, like, kind of the recommendations are a little confusing, because there are improvements recommended, but not as it relates to the development.
Yes.
That's the conclusion.
Yes, that is the conclusion. That the development isn't going to have a material impact on the issue that's already there. So, I can tell you that there has been some preliminary investigation by the city on what we can do with that intersection in conjunction with the City of Trotwood. Nothing's gone anywhere yet. We're looking at potential grant funding and see what the state has available.
I guess, just as a thought, would it be wrong to ask the developer to fix or help contribute to the, to the problem, or to, to the correction of the problem that might get worse, that exists already?
No, there's, I mean, there's nothing that would prohibit the city from asking them to do that.
Do we know what Trotwood will be willing to contribute to this project?
So, in our dealings with the City of Trotwood, they've been very cordial. We've worked out well with pursuing grant funding. We're doing a roundabout at Hoak Road in Westbrook with the City of Trotwood, and I think that they would be open to that as well, if we were to do something similar there.
It seems like that kind of, a correction of that intersection is kind of pretty much a long-term effort, I would think, if you've got land acquisition to make as well.
It's not going to be overnight. I mean, I've lived here my entire life, and that intersection's been weird my entire life. So, you know, yeah, it's, it's a long-term, it's a long-term plan. I mean, because I can tell you now, the intersection of Hoak and Westbrook, so we applied for that grant this past year, and it's programmed out for 2028.
Any, any further questions, comments?
What price point are you proposing for these properties?
I'm Jie Cun Liu, owner of Shanghai Enterprises. The price point is averages 350,000, from like, a little bit over 300,000 to over some 400,000.
Is there a builder picked out that you guys intend to use?
We are still, yeah, we don't want to marry too first, early, too, too quick, yeah.
Are there any other developments? It's my understanding this is Trotwood City School District, right?
Yeah.
Are there any other developments with a 300 to $400,000 price point in the Trotwood City School District right now?
I'm not aware.
Over in Moss Creek, yeah.
I mean, but.
And then, further down on Olive Road, there's a, there's some, yes.
Are they completed development plans, or?
They're not brand-new, no. But some, Moss Creek, I believe, is still being built. Yeah, some of them are.
I believe there's about three separate areas there that they come in between about 300-plus to 400.
Well, thank you.
Amanda, I had a question just in term, oh, I'm sorry. I had a question, kind of to dovetail off David's question about, and Derek's raising the issue of the, of the traffic issue, knowing it's, you know, it's not going to get fixed overnight. But what, what is the fix? You know, if, not to have to have you put your engineer cap on, but like, what is the fix?
So, I can tell you that through ODOT, the big push is for roundabouts. That's, that's the big thing for ODOT, to provide grant funding. I mean, there are other things that we could look at, but would really, at that point, take a realignment of the intersection. I had a council member who told me that, a long time ago, that there was talk about potentially bringing Olive Road, the City of Trotwood was going to bring Olive Road and connect it directly to Taywood. So, it would go around Ernst Cemetery and connect there. I don't think that's ever going to happen. But I guess the prevailing thought with the state right now is roundabouts.
Any, any further questions, comments from the commission? No? Okay. I'll go ahead and ask for a motion to open the floor, a motion and second to open the floor for public comment.
So, move.
Second.
Mr. Bill's moved. Mr. Muncy seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? All opposed? Okay. I will go ahead and, and open the floor to public comment. And just, and I think, Barb, do you have the list? Or who's got the list? Oh, I don't, I don't think I have it. Yeah. Can, or can you grab the list? Thank you, somebody. Just to give you the rules, each speaker has three minutes to make a comment. If your comment's been made by a previous speaker, please, please try not to replicate too much. Director, please direct your comment to the Planning Commission and not directly to the applicant. And the applicant will have a chance to respond to the comments received at the end. So, we'll go ahead and start. The first person on the list, thank you, thank you, is Eric Brown.
Eric Brown, 6241 Janus Place. I got here earlier, and I talked with Amanda, and she cleared up some things about the residential thing. One of my questions, and I'm just going to ask it again, just so everybody's clear on it. When they changed from a residential, single-unit to a planned development district, and they're changing this, my understanding is that rezoning would allow things other than a single-family home. But I believe that they have to come back with a new plan, and that zoning may not apply? So, they'd have to redo it somehow? Is that correct?
Yeah, that's, that's correct. So, this, this preliminary plan would be just for residential. And then, if it gets changed to PDD, and they want to put apartments or a commercial building, they got to come back with a new preliminary plan, right?
So, regardless, the zoning doesn't get reverted back to the original? It stays right where you're moving it to? So, in the future, somebody could come through and say, "Well, let's do this instead of the single-family home."
Yeah, but it's, it's still the same exact process from square one, if somebody wants to do that. So, if someone wanted to put a commercial property there, multifamily, they would have to start in the exact same position that we're starting today.
Okay, I understand that the, the zoning change would not affect property taxes or school taxes. That would remain the same. I heard that it's going to be an HOA in the whole development? Okay, will that, the rules of the HOA prevent people outside that development from going into that development, using the park, or anything of that nature?
Hey, Mr. Ball, can we do this? Can you, can you?
Yes.
As your questions.
I'm, I'm sorry.
Maybe we'll have, we'll have Ben come up after you're done with the questions to answer. Is that okay? Okay.
So, will the homes or basement have, homes have basements or storm shelters? And just as a note I'll throw in here about that intersection with Westbrook and Taywood, you got a golf course there that's owned by the city. So, you could take a corner of that to help develop that corner. But I would suggest that while the construction is going on, you monitor how all those construction vehicles are going in and out. Because right now, we have school buses from both Trotwood and Northmont going down Janus to avoid that intersection. So, this development's only going to make it worse.
Okay, my time's up. Thank you. Mr. Schilling, what we might do is, we might wait, if you can kind of keep track of the questions, we'll have you come up after, after everybody's done, if that's okay. And I'll just, I'll just name who signed in, and if somebody wants to speak, please come up. If you, if you don't, just wave your hands and tell me, tell me you're good. Greg Merkel? Bill Seider, Mr. Bill Seider?
Not for this question.
Thank you. Ms. Joe Seider? Okay. Mr. Kevin McCloskey?
I'm Kevin McCloskey, 4396 Lynchmere Drive. So, first question I have is, on the slide there, it said that the, or that there was a traffic study done, but it's still required. So, I think there was a traffic study done, but there's further information you need. I'm not exactly sure what was, does that make sense?
Yeah, just can we?
On the slides, it said, "Final development plan and plot submission requires certain additional information not included with the preliminary plan." And the first thing listed is, "Has completed traffic study, which will consider the impact of the proposed development," which means you either didn't accept that, or you didn't receive that, is that correct?
No, the traffic study, so the traffic study was accepted by our engineering firm. Typically, traffic studies.
What did that mean on the slide?
Well, typically, traffic studies aren't completed during a preliminary phase. They're not, they're just not. And they went ahead and did the preliminary because of staffs telling them basically that intersection is potentially messy.
And I'm not really that concerned about the intersection. My concern is the stub road or the egress road on Ponderosa emptying into Lynchmere. Lynchmere is a minimum of 27 feet width, which is by code. But the problem we have there is when folks park on both sides of the street, the trash truck cannot get through. 7:30, 7 o'clock in the morning, honk, 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 we have to get up and move cars. School buses, very difficult to get through. I don't know about a fire truck. I don't know, I've never seen it go through. So, that is a huge concern there. According to the Institute of Transportation Engineers, this amount of development will, you typically can average about 10 trips per household, times 103, would be 1,030 trips per day, three egress, that means 343 coming onto Lynchmere. It's just not designed for that. So, the question I guess I have is, why isn't the egress going out onto Westbrook? I mean, that makes all the sense in the world. Westbrook is a much, much larger street, designed for the additional traffic. Lynchmere is not. It's just all there is to it. So, that's my big concern. Now, there is issues as well onto Janus. That, again, is. That again is, is the correct amount of width, but there's no sidewalks there. But the big difference is with Lynchmere, our lots are smaller and our driveways are smaller. So that results in a lot more parked cars on the street versus Janus, which they have much larger lots. Okay.
Amanda, maybe after we have Mr. Schilling come up, can we, can we just address that? Or can we, can we, we can, I get your question is, can we, can we note the concern for the, would it impact this application now, or is it one of those things that's going to come out kind of when the final development plan comes out?
Well, I mean, it's something that we'll definitely take into consideration with the final development plan, and we can bring it up with our city engineer that, that that was brought up.
The traffic stuff I've heard about is that intersection, but there's no impact on really Lynchmere and Janus. I think there maybe would, of course, I live on Lynchmere, so I'd take that for what it's worth, but because of the shorter driveways, there's a lot more parked cars, a lot more issue there. Janus, you know, I walk...
Sir, if you want to talk, come up to the microphone, we can't get you on tape.
I know, my time's up, so.
I get it, I get it, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. But the difference is, in Janus, the, the lots are much bigger, the driveways are much longer. I'm telling you, there's no parked cars on Janus, there just aren't. I walk all the time, there isn't, but it's really a problem on Lynchmere. So I think if we could change the Egress and have it come out onto Westbrook, that would eliminate those issues. And of course, again, I don't live on Janus, but I just don't see the parked cars there to where possibly wouldn't be as much of an issue. Thank you. Thanks for the extra time.
Roxanne McCloskey? Okay, thank you. Rose Plummer?
Hi, Rose Plummer, 11415 Old Mill Road. So just a couple of questions to add to the list for, for the builder and developer here. So will the HOA preclude rentals in this community? So question there. Additionally, will there be a request for TIF funding for this? And just kind of overall concern that no builder of these properties has been identified just yet. So that's all I have. Thanks.
Mr. John Bills? David and Sharon Cup? Okay. Mr. Lou, you signed in? All right. Mr. Ryan Farmer? Okay, thank you, councilman. And Ms. Paulette Farmer? Okay, thank you. All right, we'll go ahead and ask for a, a motion and second to close the floor to public comment.
I'm going to close the floor.
A second.
Okay, it's been properly motion and seconded, all those in favor to close the floor to public comment?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
All opposed? No? Motion carried. Okay. Mr. Schilling? Please call it up.
I just want to thank, thank the public for, for their comments. We do, we do appreciate them, we do hear you, and we want to put your minds at ease. So there was a, I'll start with the TIS. There were a couple, a couple things to address here. So there, there was a concern that, that we're going to be contributing to the issue that's at the intersection. The, the study looked at exactly that. That's what the point of the study was, was to do, is to, is to look at these select intersections and to determine if there was material effect by our development to that intersection. And it did not find that we triggered any sort of improvement. Is there additional volume that's generated? Yes, but there is not material effect to that intersection such that it would make a pre-existing condition even worse, to the point where improvements are needed. There was a question about when exactly the TIS would be, would be approved or required. My understanding is that would be a final development plan step. And then the gentleman's comment about Lynchmere, we obviously can't do anything about Lynchmere, but we, I don't think that Lynchmere is going to be the logical route out of the site. I think the folks will go either to the direct west or to the east. That said, we are going to be looking at some of the concerns that, that the gentleman had with regard to fire truck maneuverability. We're providing ample room according to the, the city of Clayton's right-of-way and street width standards. And then there was a question about why we're not proposing access to the south, to Westbrook. If you've driven down Westbrook, there's a very steep hill. That would not be conducive to site distance. So we very quickly ruled out access along Westbrook Road, it just simply isn't safe. As you would be exiting the site, you would not be able to see safely up the hill to know if oncoming traffic is coming. So that's why we don't have access proposed along Westbrook. We are looking into TIF funding. We, we have been in talks with the school district. We have not, there has not been an agreement that has been reached, but that is part of the discussion. And of course, if, if further public improvements were warranted, I think that would be included in that discussion as well. There's a question about open space, whether it would be HOA or public. I think we're open to the perspective of the city and of the commission on that. Whether it would be more appropriate or more desirable to have it one way or the other, I don't think we are firmly in one camp. So we're definitely open to your feedback on that. That's why we're here, that's why we're at this preliminary stage, is to get that sort of feedback. Jason, do you want to speak to the HOA excluding rentals?
Too early.
Too early? Okay. I think, I think that's it. There was a question about, or a concern about a builder not being selected. I think it's, it's the same answer. We're, we're here seeking preliminary feedback. We do have every intention of proceeding with the project. We think it's a, a good fit for the community. And we're, we're still, Jason is still, like he said, he doesn't want to get married too quickly, so he's still, still looking for the right one, so.
Can you tell me what kind of timeline you're envisioning for this? I know this is your preliminary plan review, but when you, when, if everything went smoothly in terms of approvals and all, when would you anticipate breaking ground?
Yeah, I think, I think it would be probably Q2 of, of 2026.
And then to build out a two-year process or one year?
So all done in one phase?
There was one question I had was like, I don't remember seeing construction entrances on, on the plan. Was that, is that a requirement yet or not? I don't, I don't want to ask for it if it's not.
No, it's, it's not at this point. The logical entry point would be off of Taywood.
Yeah.
Where there's already, you know, whenever they went in and cleared the site, yeah.
Yeah.
Mr. Schilling, is there any further discussion among commission members?
I don't.
Okay. Good, okay. Okay.
Is there a need to consult with Trotwood at all on this project, or is it just Clayton because it's in the city limits?
So it's just within the city limits, it's Trotwood School District. I can tell you that I have, I emailed Mr. Howard, the superintendent of the school district, and let them know that they were planning this project and that they would potentially be requesting a TIF. He emailed me back, said that he'll let his board know, and that was the last communication that he and I had.
Okay, Derek, did you have something?
I usually beat the drum of maintaining the minimum standards for the residential district that's already there. That's at least my two cents on it. So I know that the concern is always from the constituents that there's, you know, it's always the same two or three problems. It's always water, density, and is this going to be successful, or are we going to have another, you know, Village North Clayton, not to beat them up all the time, and then traffic. And, you know, I, I feel like whenever there's RSD in place, that it's a, it's a kind of a cop-out, an easy cop-out to say, this is the, this is the density we've already approved for this lot. So that's my kind of two cents. I don't, I don't know if it makes a huge impact on this project, but this is my thought. I didn't know if anyone else had shared the sentiment.
Referring to the number of properties that can be built. Keeping it or changing it, is that what you're referring to?
Yeah, like if we kept it as RSD, minimum requirement 60-foot lot, 10-foot setbacks, I think that would, I don't think it would, I don't think it would satisfy everyone who is upset with, you know, all the density of the proposed projects, but at least gives us something, a standard that's already in place to say, this is what, so we can point to the developer and say, you bought the property, here's what, here's what it was zoned. That, the only other thought I have is, I am a little confused on the traffic impact study because they did focus so much on that intersection, and there are improvements suggested. And I don't, I don't know what the direction of traffic will be, but I don't know if we can ask for a second opinion or a second firm to do an impact study to focus more on the side streets and maybe not quite as much on the intersection requirement, or the intersection issues. Those are just two thoughts I have.
Amanda, would you want to comment on that, or would you want to comment at all?
There's nothing prohibiting staff or this body from requesting additional information for a final development plan.
Mr. Schilling, would you like to weigh in on that? I mean, if, to Mr. Muncy's point, if, for example, the concern that was brought up about Lynchmere, is there an opportunity to really kind of, kind of do a bit of a deep dive on, on, you know, on, on kind of that concern as well?
Yeah. I don't remember which intersections were studied exactly. The, I guess what I would say is, the, the findings of the traffic study are not a matter of opinion. They are, there's a analysis, there's a yes or no, it's warranted or not, the improvement. And that's what they, that's what they base their conclusions off of. So there's not subjectivity within that. They're just laying out what they find from traffic volumes, the, the intersection analysis and the warrants. And then they put that in the report and they make their conclusion based on those standards. So there's not a, there's not subjectivity that's added into it where you would get like a difference of opinion. But definitely, I can, I can confirm, I guess after this, or maybe I can try to find it on my phone, which intersections exactly they studied. I know it wasn't just the Salem Road and Taywood Road intersection, I know they studied more than that. I think it may have been the Lynchmere and Taywood one, and then maybe the, it's not Orin, but the Janus, to the east, Janus and Westbrook. I think those were the other two that they studied. But I think if they did study those, then that would tell the story of the impact to Lynchmere. So I can try to find that on my phone, but yes, apologies, I don't, I don't remember which, which intersections exactly were, were looked at.
While you're up here, I guess, have you looked at what number of lots would be present on a final plan if RSD zoning were required?
I think, I think we end up losing 10 lots. I think it goes down to 93 if I remember correctly. I know that was something that was brought up in the work session, and I think it was 93.
There was one other comment that I saw in the packet about properties that dead into intersections, and there's like a concern of backing out of the property into the intersection. I think it was a comment from Seth.
At the T intersections?
Yeah. And when I was looking at it, I did kind of see like, oh yeah, that, that might create a problem. I mean, has there been any consideration of eliminating the lots that back into the T intersections?
No, but we can, we can do other things, we can get creative with driveway placement. Yeah.
Okay, so, so as I mentioned in the beginning, on, on this item, we would ask for a motion from the commission, I'll call for a motion to recommend approval, approval with conditions or disapproval. And then, and then Barb will perform a roll call of the vote. So I would, I would just ask if there's a, I'll call for a motion for approval, approval with conditions or disapproval. Is there any questions before we do that? No?
I think I'll probably make the same motion I've made a few times. I, I would move that we approve the preliminary subdivision plan with all recommendations and conditions from the staff report, and with the added condition that the lot, the lot requirements meet RSD standards, existing RSD standards.
So I have a question on that. If he, if we're meeting the existing RSD standards, are we even here for this presentation? Because there's no zoning change.
Yeah, so if they're going to build straight RSD, it would just be a plat, is what we'll be approving. I mean, because like...
It'd be a staff review and we wouldn't be here.
Well, there would, yeah.
And so it'd still be a major site plan with, or if not identical.
Yes. So I mean, if this body wanted to continue and move this forward and can let it be a PDD with RSD standards, you can do that.
I think the PDD has a couple enhanced standards, like for open space and...
They do, and there's also more stringent rules if, if they do want to come in and make changes later. I mean, even something as simple as a lot combo has to come before this body, so.
Derek, can you restate that, just so we hear it one more time? Sorry.
Move to approve with the conditions identified by the, the staff, so all, all staff conditions, and then with the added condition that they meet minimum lot requirements for RSD.
I disagree with adding the minimal requirements of RSD. I think either we're going to approve or disapprove. If we're going to approve with the staff recommendations, then I think that's the line we should go with versus adding another caveat.
Okay, so we have a, we have one motion for, for Derek's motion, do we hear a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. Okay, I'll go ahead and call, or Barb, do you want to go ahead and call that?
Mr. Bills?
Aye.
Mr. Foley?
No.
Mr. Muncy?
Yes.
Ms. Bridget?
No.
And Ms. Williams?
No. So that motion failed by one vote. Okay. Do we hear a, a second? Do we hear another motion?
I will forward a motion that we move forward with the actual staff recommendations of the preliminary subdivision and the rezoning.
And that includes, does that include, is that the slide correct? The, do you need to add that to your, I guess that's the staff recommendation? Okay.
Yeah, that is the staff recommendations.
Okay, so that's, Ms. Pritchett moved, do we hear a second?
I'll second.
Okay, so my motion and seconding, Barb?
Mr. Bills?
No.
Mr. Foley?
Yes.
Mr. Muncy?
No.
Ms. Pritchett?
Yes.
And Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Okay, so the motion passed, and that motion then will be forwarded to the city council for their review, and that'll happen at some point this summer, correct?
July seventeenth.
July seventeenth, just for everybody, so you know when that's going to happen. Okay. Thank you to everybody for being here and for giving us your, your opinions, and also for being present tonight. The, the second agenda item is PC 25-03, a request for a final subdivision plan for the Hunter's Path extension, Phase Three, a proposed residential subdivision. The request was made by DDC Management LLC. Go ahead and hear the presentation.
This next case is a request for a preliminary, a final development plan, so that is actually incorrect. It is a final development plan. We've already heard the preliminary development plan. So this is a final subdivision application that was received on June 5th. This is a straight zoning RSD district, proposed for this final development plan. It's a single-family residential subdivision. The applicant is Ross Benfeld. On behalf of DDC Management, the property owner is Lagos Properties. This is a thirty-seven acre property with no current structures on it. The proper public notices were given, and the location of the subject property is near the intersection of Westbrook Road and Union Road. Here is a property map that shows where that is. It's about halfway between Hokey Road and Union Road along Westbrook. Here is the surrounding zoning. Again, this is RSD. They're not proposing to rezone the property. To the east is a planned development district, to the north is residential, single-unit district, to the west is the city of Inglewood, and to the south is the city of Trotwood. Here's the location of the property. And here is the final development plan. This is the site plan layout. You'll see two different sections here, one to the west. There are lots forty-one through ninety-seven, plus the open space, lot one hundred on the western side there, and then to the eastern side, we have lots one through forty there. Just going to skip through these. And so again, the current zoning is RSD. They're proposing to move forward with the zoning district for the subdivision plan. And the RSD outright permits eleven certain uses. However, they're just proposing single-unit, single-family homes. And then the RSD zoning district conditionally permits fourteen other certain uses, however, none are proposed at this time. Proposed zoning, RSD, it's not within the Clayton Improvement District, and the proposed subdivision is also not within the Special Area One overlay. Those different overlays have additional requirements that this property is not subject to. Here is the analysis of the request. It's for ninety-seven single-family homes, eleven acres of open space, which comes out to about twenty-nine percent of the site, and it is two-point-six-one units per acre. There are two access points, one along Westbrook Road, and the other is an extension of Falls Road. They propose water and sewer extensions from existing facilities, and then there is new infrastructure, including streets, sidewalks, lighting, and a multi-use path along Westbrook Road. Neighborhood amenities include open space and two retention basins that have passive open space around them. Here is the analysis of the request against the city's comprehensive plan. Future land use proposes single-family homes, and that's what's being proposed. Here's a description of what single-family homes, that description within the comprehensive plan, as far as what does that look like. The chapter eleven-eleven-point-eleven offers guidance related to the desired development pattern within the RSD district, including the uses and development standards. And then the property is also subject to chapter eleven-sixty-one subdivision, which offers additional guidance with respect to design and development standards. Let's see here. I'll just skip to the staff recommendation here first. After evaluating the request, staff recommends the planning commission make a motion to recommend approval of the final subdivision plan with the following to be provided, the following conditions. All comments from Clayton staff, Clayton Planning Department, Clayton Engineering Department are addressed to the Clayton Planning Commission's satisfaction. And then again, here are the potential next steps. This goes to city council for a final review, I believe. And with that, I'll turn it back over to the planning commission.
Go back to my cheat sheet here real quick, excuse me.
I'm going to ask you, can you go back to the site plans? You kind of flipped them a little fast.
Gotcha. Go to this one right here.
Seth, is, is north-
Up.
Straight up?
Yes.
Okay.
That's right.
Okay.
Westbrook Road's along the bottom.
Okay.
Is, so is there just the one exit out of the west portion of the property under Westbrook Road?
I think the developer did approach the city of Inglewood about potentially connecting to the development to the west, but we're not quite there yet in our relationship with Inglewood. We'll get there someday, but the connection was denied.
That was on it.
Falls Road, and they still have denied that.
It's not Falls Road, what is the road? I cannot, yeah. It, okay, yeah.
With the applicant, want to, want to get up and, and kind of add anything that staff
presented? And please say name and address, please. Thank you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. John Bills with DDC Management, thirty-six oh one Rigby Road. Don't really have much to add. Obviously, we've already been here for the preliminary plan. We haven't deviated from that, other than minor comments that we've addressed with the city, so no changes, you know, that we wanted to make to lay out, anything like that. It matches what we've already been here. Got recommended, went to city council, and got approved, so no modifications from that. Similar to comments from the previous hearing a few minutes ago, we actually went the RSD route, the, the straight zoned route, not asking for variances, meeting all of that. I, I'm very familiar with the process before. We did the first part of Hunter's Path, and that was a PDD, and we went through, you know, all of those things. For this one, we decided to go ahead and go the, the straight zone route, which really, if you look at it, you know what we did in the first two phases, we're doing, it's going to be the exact same houses. It's the same builder, it's really the same. The lots are ten foot, or eight foot bigger, just like what the others were suggesting, and that's really to meet the side yard setback requirement more than anything. So the house sizes, we anticipate them to be the same, same builder, similar price point, like intended to be the same, but everything continues to go up a little bit, so we do expect it to creep up a little bit from where it was in the previous two phases. But really, nothing here to add. I know there were some questions that came up about the entrances. We did, ideally, we would have connected into the Inglewood Road, it just, they would not allow us to. We would have preferred it for connectivity, all of those things, but it was denied, as Mrs. Immerlin noted. So we had to remove that and just create the loop up there. As far as concerns of access or anything, it has been reviewed with both fire and police. It meets all of the code requirements for RSD, for number of units, and length of road, and all of that. While not ideal, it would have been better to have the connection. Unfortunately, with the way this lays out, we're unable to. So excited to continue on with another project with the, the city. It's been a great relationship for us, for the builder and that, here for the last three or four years, whatever it's been. And so we're excited for the opportunity just to continue the relationship and move on into the next one with a little bit more ease because we are just doing RSD. And I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Yeah, please, please maybe stay for a minute. Commission members have any questions?
There's only one comment in the staff report that I went, and just my eyes locked on to, and that's just about cleaning out that drainage ditch. I don't know if there's any plans to clean that out. I know the residents have all kind of asked for that to happen.
Yeah, and by drainage ditch, you mean like the vertical through, yeah. So, and, and what we've talked about, yes, it's hard for me to commit exactly what we'll do till we walk it thoroughly. It is more than a drainage ditch. It's considered a blue line stream on the national database, which means there's pretty strict limitations on what we can and can't do by impacting that. But what we committed to earlier, and we still will, is to look at it like with staff or whatever while we're under construction. We can't break any of the rules that would limit, we can't do anything that changes the direction of flow, there's all kinds of limitations there. It wasn't intended, like, we're not clearing it, we're not, you know, we want it to remain natural, but if there are debris, trash, or whatever that's in there, we would come in and clean that out with what we could do by hand, because you can't get equipment down into the creek and disturb it. But we, I haven't walked that entire creek line, we don't want an ice ore, we don't want something that looks bad, so we'll clean up to what we are allowed to do.
And then maintenance for that, after that point, would be part of the HOA's responsibility?
Correct, it'll be owned by the HOA. That, that whole, all the open space will be part of the HOA. And again, any maintenance that's required would be no different than any other open space. It would fall to, not to the city, but to the HOA.
Can you point out on the map where you were wanting the outlet to be?
Well, we, we were always going to have this one.
That's Westbrook Road now?
Oh, yeah. Right, here's the road that Inglewood currently, it's stubbed into it, it was intended to connect, but obviously, they've chosen not to want it to connect into their community.
And that's Wild Rose, is that what that is?
Um, Wild Rose Lane.
And so you have just entrances, or entrance on Westbrook Road only, is that correct?
Yeah, for this portion, it's just the one entrance on to Westbrook, since we couldn't have the other connectivity, and obviously, just with the narrow, with the blue line stream, and that we're limited to one access point there. This one will connect through there, and partly due to having too many entrances too close together, and obviously, we've got the full original two phases of Hunter's Path that they can come in through for that. It's really just an extension of that subdivision already.
Okay, so that road here will continue on through?
Yeah, Falls Road, we've already built it to this with, I don't remember if it's phase one or phase two of Hunter's Path, but there's a stub road here that will connect into, in our existing subdivision.
Okay. I think last time we talked, there was a gentleman who had a strip of land that was, is that the same? Did you have that discussion and satisfy him?
What, what he was referring to is all the way up here in the northwest corner, you can see how our property, like, just juts up there. It does nothing for us. We don't really have a preference one way or the other, but we haven't entered into any further discussions with that property owner. But it's just a little strip that comes up there, doesn't benefit us in any way, we don't need it, but we haven't had any further discussion with the property owner.
If I remember correctly, there was some issue with trees on the line, on the property?
Yep, there, that was one of the large concerns that came up in the first public hearings of up along the, the northern portion, and then what abuts the open space, I believe, over here into our existing subdivision, and, and how we, there's a lot of discussion around it. There, there's really was two primary concerns of, that, that we heard from the neighbors to the north. The primary one, I would say, is water, and like flooding that they have, the water doesn't get away, and a close second was the trees, and the fact that there's dead trees in that. On all of this section over here, we're going to be helping the, the stormwater first, but you'll see in the limits of disturbance, in order to help the stormwater, we need to clear all the way up so that we can create ditches and catch the water, that is the problem now, get it away from the area and get it into our storm basins. It's kind of hard to see, I don't have a pointer, but up between lots sixty-three and sixty-four, you can see there's two extra dashed lines. Those are storm easement for a pipe, that we have a catch basin up on that property line, that the water will get directed through swells along those houses into the catch basin, and then make it into the storm system in order to help with the drainage. It will, should drastically improve the stormwater problems up there. However, in order to do that, we do need to clear the trees so you can have the swell to get the water. You got to get the water to flow to where you want it to go to, to get it away.
So there's actually going to be corrugated tile up on that northern property line, or close to the-
There wouldn't be any tile, there'd just be, like, along the property, it'll be just swells, like, ditches that, and I, and ditch is a strong word. Swells typically in a residential, it's a slight depression, it just has to have enough fall for it to make it into the catch basin, and it'll meet all the minimum stand, or the standards required for that in, in the plans.
So if the trees are removed to address the water issue, it's not possible to replant trees in that area later?
Correct, because it would just cause future stormwater problems, anywhere where we have the drainage swells in the rear yard. That is correct.
Does that ad, um, does that address the residence, the residence issue?
I mean, I, I don't know, I can't speak for them. I know in an ideal world, it would stay wooded. The dead trees would be removed, the water would be fixed, and it would stay a farm field. Unfortunately, it's not possible with the construction requirements, the engineering requirements, and we, we also have to get the water off of the new lots we built. What we don't want to have is build a home up on the front of these, leave trees, and then both have flooding in their rear yards. So it's the proper way to develop it, one for our residents, but we'll also fix the existing problems with it. But unfortunately, you can't have trees in swells where you're trying to, the city wouldn't let me plant them in swells if, even if I wanted to.
All right, thank you, Mr. Bills. I think what we'll do is we'll move to the, I'll go ahead and ask for a motion in a second to open the floor to public comment.
So move.
I'll second.
Okay, it's been properly moved and seconded to open the floor for public comment. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, we'll go ahead and, and call, and I'm going to try to do this from memory. And I think, Mr. Sider, did you want to speak to this issue? Mr. and Mrs. Sider? Okay. At the end, if I leave anybody out, just raise your hand, we'll get you up there.
Okay, Bill Sider, five nine oh two Mountain Royal Drive, Clayton, we're on, I think, fifty-seven, somewhere up here at the end of this northern cul-de-sac. And I think there's a little bit of confusion we're having, because we looked at final plans that showed that the, the resident properties went all the way up to our existing property line. There was not that little strip that you show on this map, so I'm not sure what the case actually is.
I can answer that real quick. So the minimum lot widths, they weren't meeting it in the previous plan, I believe, and so when they made the adjustment to the lot widths, that changed the configuration a little bit.
So are you telling me that the end of their property goes all the way to where our property ends now, the actual resident?
There's now a buffer strip.
There still is a buffer.
No.
Well, the pla, the plan we had, had none. So, which is it?
Can you, can you re, can you, okay. Hey, Mr. Sider, can you, can you, I've, just for my benefit- Hey, Mr. Sider, can you, can you, just for my benefit, can you restate the concern? Just, just to make sure.
The concern is the, the diagram here shows a buffer between the two northern residence lots and where our property line would end. There's a 38-foot strip between the new residence northern, there'd be their side yard and where our backyard would be. There's a 38-foot strip there that does not belong to the residence. The final plan we saw showed that northern strip.
The plan is, the plan is not right. That's right. We have the correct plan right here, and I can pass that down to you. That shows the property lines adjoining there.
So, what's the correct one? It's not? It's, what we're looking at is not the correct plan. Okay. So, in that case, you're going, we're very much annoyed with this. That's the nicest way I can put it.
Sorry, I'm sorry, can you say that again?
So, with the re, this final plan where the residence lots are no longer 61 feet, they're a lot bigger than that. They, they, they have 38 more feet. And their side yard butts up to our backyard. There is no buffer, so we have existing trees there. We own about three and a half foot of those trees, that tree line. And then, the rest would be on the resident's side yard. So, after this builder leaves, sells the plot to the new resident, that resident can elect to clear cut it or totally let it go, and there's nothing we could do about it. So, this is objectionable, quite frankly. I thought the conditions of their preliminary approval from this organization, this board, was that trees would be preserved on our northern end, not necessarily all the way down the line in Phase Four, but in Phase Three, there would be. And there's no, as soon as that developer sells the land, that commitment is gone. So, this is objectionable. You know, they did some good things as far as light placement at the cul-de-sac. I'm optim, cautiously optimistic the water will be dealt with. I have another concern, a huge concern. Now that there's no longer that 38-foot buffer, the northwestern owner, his property will actually, will go up on top of partial, part of the berm that forms our southern end of a retention pond. So, he'll be responsible for any trees or maintenance there. In addition, the outlet of that retention pond and off of Mount Royal Drive extends underneath the berm and goes another at least 40 feet to this, this blue line stream. And I would like to know if there was ever a problem with that. Who would maintain that? Is that the homeowners association or it's got to be negotiated with them and the city and, and our limbo kind of situation with retention ponds? So, I, there's a number of issues I have. You'll hear more from this. And those are the biggest ones.
Thank you. What we'll do, if it's okay, is after everybody gets done speaking, we'll go ahead and ask Mr. Bills to come up and address it. Thank you. Thanks so much. Did any, I know many people left after the first item, but is anybody else signed up to speak on this issue? In your name and address, please.
On June 16th, we came and looked at the plans. It only has Phase Three in the final plan. It doesn't have Phase Four in this final plan. March 24th, the Planning Commission approved the preliminary plan of Hunter's Path Phase Three and Four with conditions of remove the dead trees and replace trees on east, west, and north tree lines. On April 17th, the Clayton City Council meeting, the council approved the Planning Commission's decisions of the preliminary plan with those conditions. The final plan excluded these conditions of removing dead trees and replacing trees on the east, west, and north tree lines. It was stated in the council meeting, the final steps of the final plan are, and that's your first page, provide a traffic study, utilities, grading, stormwater and drainage, building, architecture, and landscaping. The final plan presented to, in the Planning Commission, has significant lot size changes, decreased open space, and included the tree line as part of lots 141 and 142. The preliminary plan lot numbers are 10 and 11. There was no mention by the city of these, of these changes to be included in the next steps for the final plan. The council approved the layout of the preliminary, preliminary plan the way it was. On the final plan lot 141, prelim plan is number 10, is now 99.38 feet. The prelim plan has it at 61. A 38-foot tree line is included in the, in Lot 141. On the final plan lot 142, prelim plan number 11 is now 103.29 feet. The preliminary plan, it has it at 61. A 38-foot tree line is included in the lot, in Lot 142. In the preliminary plan, it had a 38-foot tree line parallel to these two lots. The tree line is now going to be owned by the homeowners of the, of lots 141 and 142. These homeowners will have to maintain the 180 feet each of the tree line. Lot 142, as my husband said, will own 40 feet of the berm of the detention pond on Mount Royal Drive that backs up to Lot 59 on Mount Royal Drive and will have to be main, well, they will have to maintain this berm. These lots are parallel to five neighbors on Mount Royal Drive. This can create problems between these neighbors and the owners of lots 141 and 142. These, these new owners could cut all the trees down. The owners could neglect the tree lines, resulting in dead trees falling into Mount Royal Drive neighbors' backyards, damaging property and possibly hurting people. The preliminary plan has this 38-foot tree line as a buffer between the Hunter's Path and neighbors on Mount Royal Drive. The final plan of the Hunter's Path, Phase One, Phase One, has the 38-foot tree line buffer between the Hunter's Path and the neighbors of Mount Royal Drive. The best solution for everyone is for the homeowners association to maintain the tree line, this buffer, rather than the homeowners of lots 141 and 142. We highly object to the final plan's layout. The prelim, the Planning Commission and the Clayton City Council approve the preliminary plan's layout with the lot sizes, open space, and tree line buffer. And this is what the neighbors on Mount Royal Drive want. Now, I gave you blowups of the preliminary and the final plan, and I gave you some information of what I just spoke about. I don't know how you guys can go forward when you presented the wrong layout. You have the wrong, the wrong, it's only Phase Three. It's only Phase Three in their final plan. It's not the whole Phase Three and Phase Four.
It is Phase Three.
Did anybody else want to speak on this issue? And I, thank you. Please, your name and address. At this point, you've already signed in here, too, so.
Yeah, Rose Plummer, 11415 Old Mill Road. So, I really wasn't planning to speak to this one, but really concerned now. So, what happens? So, is like Phase Three, just this? So, then what happens? Does that preliminary plan just stay approved for an endless period of time? Or what, you know, how does the process work? I mean, it's just kind of an education question for myself. You know, how long does a preliminary plan stay open then? I'm just kind of at, just confused at this point in time on, in a number of ways. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't know the exact number. Typically, preliminary plans are good for one year. Some of them, I think, maybe it might be good up to three years. I know I've seen that in Clayton's code, but we'd have to confirm that to see.
So, the developer in the future would have to come back for Phase Four. So, right now, we are only talking about Phase One.
What was Phase Four? I think.
The farther west, the section farther west, on the other side of the blue line stream.
This is just the final plan for Phase Three. We're not talking about anything that happens in Phase Four. They're going to come back with a separate final development plan probably soon for Phase Four.
Yes. So, if you'll recall, with Phase One and Two, I think there was maybe a year period between the development plans because they had built out and sold so quickly.
Make sure I understand this. So, Amanda and Seth, so Phase Four includes the properties that were the concerns that have been raised, correct?
Yes. Phase Three is, yeah, to the, to the right, yes.
Okay, gotcha.
Phase Three is only the portion that actually connects into the existing Hunter's Path development, not the one that'll require a curb cut on Westbrook.
Gotcha. Okay. 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 And then Seth and Amanda, when, when would that take place? When would, when would that discussion be?
For Phase Three or for Phase?
For Phase Four.
For Phase, whenever the developer were to bring that back to this body. So, probably within a year would be my guess.
Okay. Okay. Okay, thank you. Okay, I, we had one other person. And ma'am, did you sign in? Do you know? Did you? Well, wants to speak on this, please come up at the same time, and then we'll have you, I'll swear you in, and we'll kind of, kind of do it together, okay? So. And your name and address, please.
My name is Debbie Cook. I'm 5892, Mount Royal Drive. And many concerns, but the tree line. For 40 years, we've taken care of that tree line, and we've used it as a buffer from the tornado, from storms. That tree line is important, especially to us that are right there. It breaks so much wind and protects us. And so, to hear the trees are going to go down or somebody else has responsibility, for 40 years, we were the first house on Mount Royal, and we have taken care of that tree line. When big trees have fallen, we've helped the farmer. We've taken them out of the field for them. We've been friends with the farmer, Muma. And that's just very upsetting to see that this whole plan has changed that drastically. The other concern I have is the traffic on Fall Gold. When you come down Summersweet, Fall Gold is this very short little street, and then it goes into Hunter's Path. Right now, we have cars parked. As you're coming into Summersweet, they would be on the right-hand side. There are cars parked all around there. And then, on the other side of Mount Royal, they continue to be parked. Sometimes, there's even a couple on both sides. It's been very difficult to get in and out of the plat with big trucks just to get through there. A couple times, I've come to turn in, I come to a complete stop and make sure nobody's flying out of Hunter's Path. It's dangerous. I worry about kids, and I worry about all of us in Hunter's Path. You don't really have a clear path. You've got to really pull halfway out into that intersection to see past the vehicles on either side of you if you're on Mount Royal Drive. It's dangerous. You've got to watch it when you get to Summersweet. So, it's not a comfortable situation. And this whole thing tonight, I think, has made everybody and made very trails rather nervous and upset. Thank you very much.
Hello, Bonnie K., 5912, Mount Royal. I feel like I'm getting to know you guys really well. Actually, I'm just continuing what Joe was talking about because she ran out of time. So, you're going to have to bear with me because I have not read this. We've talked about it a lot, but I haven't read it. Basically, the open space lots were decreased by 18 feet on the final plan, Lot 172 and the preliminary number 98. And the open spaces, the open space between lots 145 and 146 were decreased by 18-foot each. Why were they decreased? That's the question. The conditions should include removing of the dead trees and the debris from the creek, the tree line along the east and west and north side boundaries. Is all of the creek included in Phase Three? Or is, is that all part of Phase Three where the creek runs up? Or is Phase Four got part of it? Or how are you all figuring that?
The maintenance for the creek is going to be required no matter the phase.
Okay, we were just wondering which phase that was in. And then, of course, my concern, as y'all probably remember, I mow the ravine or whatever y'all call it, detention, retention, detention, pond, whatever. I'm not country. I mow it all. And the back of my property backs up to the field, of course. And there's a, there's an opening, a very wide opening, probably wider than it is from here to there, that I mow. I don't know, the rest of it's all tree lined, and then there's this one open space. When I first moved in there in the year 2000, I was a little surprised when I saw people coming in on horseback. I was like, wow, this is pretty cool. Where'd I move to? And then, next thing you know, kids can use it as a cut-through with their bikes and stuff, go down the ravine, they play down there, yada, yada, yada. My concern is because it's a nice mowed open space, that's inviting someone that if they buy that piece of property that backs up to my backyard, I'm going to have a RV parked in that nice cut, cleared area, or a boat, or something like that, something that you can't park in front of your house, it has to be behind your house line to be able to park. I don't particularly want to see that from, you know, my backyard. So, this, this change of doing away with the tree line, yes, of course, there are some trees in there that need to be taken out from the tornado. That's not your fault, our fault, or anybody's fault. That's God's will. Get them taken out. But the fact of taking away stuff that, as Debbie was saying, that we have maintained for all these years, and it does, the amount of wind because of that, it was all field. Now, there's going to be houses, so that's going to be a windbreak as well. And we understand that. But it's something, so we're, we're not looking out into somebody else's backyard. And this was never part of the plan from the get-go. So, it seems like there's been a switcheroo to us, and we, nobody knew about this.
Bonnie, let them know you back up to the buffer.
Do what?
You back up to that buffer that we're talking about.
Yeah. I back up to the buffer. Yeah. So, it just seems like this was, this was the plan originally, and now it's this plan plus they get more land that goes into, into the tree line that we have no control over, and that's, that's not what was proposed.
Thank you. Okay, thank you, sir. And by the way, Barb has a sign-in sheet, so if you go, just sign with Barb at the end.
Well, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you very much for your time. I'm just here to reiterate, oh, I'm sorry. My name is Paul Cook. I live at 5892, Mount Royal Drive. I was the very first home built on Mount Royal Drive in 1983. I'm probably the oldest living resident there. I've seen this movie before, but it was called Ryan Developers. I was supposed to be the last house on the street. That was the plan. I live in the middle of the blocks now. This thing here, we had this discussion, we've had this debate about this buffer, this tree line, this 38 feet. That's a tremendous windbreak. It saved us a lot of grief. That's a tremendous windbreak. It saved us a lot of grief, because when that EF4 went through there, it lifted my house, tore chimneys off. It was a mess. And now you're saying, now the new plan has this thing gone. Well, and now these lots are all changing, so I just kind of wonder what else is laying in the weeds here that we're going to find out after everybody gives it the stamp of approval. And then, two, three years down the road, as this developer moves on to the next feeding ground, what's going to raise its ugly head and bite us? We had this retention issue at the latter part of Mount Royal Drive. We eventually had to go to Channel Two to embarrass the developer, Ryan, to get out there and fix this thing. And it still is not really sufficient for all the water flow. Folks, we were in agreement, and now these guys come through with a whole new magic wand and run this thing up against my property line. For forty-two years, when that stuff fell in Mumaw's farm, I've cut it up and dragged it out of there. When it fell on my old buildings, I cut it up and dragged it out of there. Where was everybody at? Nobody was around to be seen, but me and my neighbors, and we've helped and pitched in and cleaned up that retention pond and did all of that. Now, today, you just want to just wave your magic wand and take it away from us. Thank you for your time.
I'm going to keep this short and sweet.
Okay, welcome, welcome.
I've got a wife at home that wants ice cream, so. My name is Sean Bryant, 3024 Falls Road, so I am actually, this house, whoops, right here. I bought that house, my wife and I bought that house about a year ago. We were told that is going to be, we're not developing over there for a while, we're not doing anything over there. Paid up lot premium, bought that space, and now they're building. We've also talked to them about the water that drains down there. There was water that will sit there for weeks and weeks and weeks, that doesn't go anywhere. We've addressed that. Nothing has been done on it. We've talked about the trees, because we bought that lot, because we love the tree line there, because it keeps that separation. I mean, we love to hear the farmer and see the corn grow in there, but we don't have that option anymore. As a educator, as a grandfather, I'm worried about traffic on that stretch of street right now. Because when cars are parked on both sides, which often are, there's not room for anything else to get through there. I actually saw the trash man on Friday, and he says, "I can't have you having cars parked on the street, because I can't get my truck through there." So, I'm worried about the safety, and worried about the water, and worried about the trees, and I'm worried about my neighbors here, who have been there in established neighborhoods, and now their quality of life and what they thought they bought into is nothing but snake oil. So, I'll sign in. Thank you very much.
Right. Did we miss anybody who wanted to speak on this issue? Okay. Okay, Mr. Bills, do you want to come up and respond to some of the issues that have been laid out? I have to call for a motion, call for a motion to close the public hearing, or the public comment portion.
Move that we close the floor to public comment.
Second.
Moved in second. It allows some favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passed. Good. All right. Thanks, Mr. Bills.
All right, I think I got most of them down. If I missed one that you want to remind me of, or something, if I don't hit on it. I'm going to try to limit it, and it was obviously figured out during the public comment section. We are only here for this portion of the property. The creek, it's going to be maintained by the HOA, and we'll be in the responsibilities of this section as well. When we build it, technically, by the boundary of the phase line, the creek is in Phase Four. Doesn't change, as Ms. Zimmerman noted, it's the HOA responsibility regardless of the phase. So, the creek will be maintained. It is also no different than we did Hunter's Path Phase One and Two. Just with something of this size, we're building it in two phases, the horizontal. And with it only being a limited number of lots here, we'll already plant, we'll be back within the year to do the final development plan for Phase Four, and potentially even build it next summer, or the end of the year, next year, the horizontal component of it. But that'll be determined on the timing of this. You know, we hope to break ground here, still this year, on the Phase Three, the eastern portion of what you're looking at here. The storm, like, I'll address the storm to begin with. Again, I'm not sure exactly what phase that is, but it kind of splits it. There's comment about, there's a berm from the existing pond forty feet onto, it sounded like, onto our property, which I don't think is the case. I would be, from our survey, we didn't see it, as well as, I'm sure, the City of Clayton didn't let Royal Oaks build their storm detention on a neighbor's property. So, the berm probably comes up close to the property line, but everything that's part of their storm system, including the pipe that outfalls, is part of their responsibility. I can't speak to whether it's the HOA, the city, I wasn't part of that subdivision, but their storm detention, no different than ours, our ponds will be the HOA's responsibility, the outfall structures, the pipes. All of those things will be part of ours. We won't be doing anything with their pond. We won't be changing the berm. It's not on our property. Where the water does outlet onto this property, it will still go to the creek, and it will still make its way through the property, as it always has. We aren't deterring that, changing it, anything to do with that, but we won't maintain anything that's not on the HOA's property, which is just standard practice in the industry. Phase Three only, not Four. Tree line, it was obviously brought up, understand it's an important item. It was brought up several times within that. As was noted, this plan did change. The lots on the end are extended upwards, and it is a wider lot. The main reason for that, and I'm not dead set on it, it was to allow for a larger home to be built there with like a three-car garage, so just for added width, since it was there. So, a little bit, probably higher dollar, a little bit nicer home. We don't have stormwater proposed up in that, meaning we don't have to remove those trees that are along there. Now, we would remove, before we sell a property, we always remove the dead trees for liability's sake. If it's not needed for the home construction, we leave the trees, because it's a wooded lot, and it helps provide that. To their point, whether it's owned by the HOA or by a homeowner, there's nothing in the code or anything that restricts cutting down of those trees. It wouldn't matter if it's the HOA or the homeowner. There's no restriction on removing those trees on the property that they own. I can't say whether a homeowner or an HOA would be more likely to do it, for whatever reason. Maybe maintenance cost becomes too high for the HOA, because trees falling, causing danger to a neighbor's property, they could choose to remove them. And that's really not up to me. That's just the code, the rules on there, because it's not in a protected area, like a deed restriction or anything. But the reason for that was to allow for a little bit bigger home, in particular, a sidecar garage. The potential, if a homeowner wants to buy that, you can't fit that on a normal sixty-foot-wide lot, forty-foot-wide house. So, that's why it did allow for it, but it's not in the clearing plans to remove those trees. We would just remove the dead ones within that area. The other areas that I talked about, predominantly Phase Four, so I'm not going to go into, is where there is storm drainage, pipes that go in the backyards to catch the water. Those are where we have to remove them. We can't plant trees back or anything, because it would go against code in order for the water to be able to make it into the storm system. One of the questions that came up with the gentleman at the end that lives in, you can see now currently where you exit Falls Road, these are temporary turnarounds that we had to put in for the city when we were building it. Because of the length of the road, you had to have turnarounds for trucks for emergency access. Those will be removed, and we will have plantings that go in its place here. Obviously, we have to clear for stormwater up here, but that's what those are, so there will still be, whatever that width is, I'm going to say twenty, twenty, thirty feet there. I'd have to scale it, but there is a buffer or a green space that's in between the old and the new, once we get rid of those emergency turnarounds, once the road is stubbed in.
Was Mr. Bryant's question, was that the issue, is that, is that what you're suggesting?
The issue was the fact that, yes, I mean, that's the turnaround to a drain, but the problem is that that road's not wide enough that a garbage truck can't fit down into their car parking lot. So, how is a school bus going to fit down that road? How is a fire truck going to fit down that road?
And I'm not going to necessarily answer that. That's a City of Clayton probably question to answer. We're building the roads that are in the code. The width to the spec, we're building what's required, and what the City of Clayton has said they want per their code. Maybe it needs to be evaluated, or again, this would be a city decision, parking on one side or something to alleviate it. I'm not proposing that. That's a bigger decision, probably citywide or a broader term, but we're following. Like I said to begin with, we chose to go this route of doing the RSD instead of a PDD, and plan to meet all codes, and are working closely with staff in order to ensure that we do that.
Thank you.
I did have one question.
Yeah, any questions from the commission members?
So, there were some questions about, there's two lots in particular that were changed in width.
It's the two on the end.
Yeah. No, 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 the open space lots. I think the one was reduced by, not on the end, in the middle. One was reduced by about twenty feet, and maybe the other one was maybe ten feet. Lot, one was 131. It looks like on the final plan, it's 113. One was seventy feet, and now it's fifty-two, or something like that.
Can I see if you're pointing out?
These two lots here. It's the lots identified by Ms. Sider.
And, I'm looking to see, so, I'm assuming this, I'm looking to confirm, this is the old one here, right?
Yeah. I guess, can you, yeah. Yeah.
Well, I guess it's worth up on here.
Yeah.
We added an open space.
Yeah.
Instead, like, so this is the wrong plan.
I think Lot 172 was not included as open space.
Correct. We added open space here to the right, because when we went back, and this is part of final development, when we went back and redid the wetland study and that, there was some added over on the right. So, that's part of, we added an open space. We didn't take away over on that right boundary, where that wetland cut through, which then we shifted lots to account for that.
There's actually, there's more, there's more open space on this, on the final plan.
On the final plan, there's an added open space lot.
Yes.
I can't speak to the overall open space. I'm only speaking to here. These are all lots going this boundary, and on our final one, there is an open space lot where there is a wetland that we're leaving alone now. I'd be happy to show the final one here with it. The Lot 172 is listed as open space on the final. There is no open space on the one we submitted previously, on the right boundary.
Okay, the right boundary, it's Lot Number 98. The 98 was seventy feet.
But it wasn't open space.
Yeah. So, why was it labeled 98, when everything else is one, two, three, four, and then seven, eight? 98 was designated as an open space on the right-hand side, and then on the left-hand side, it wasn't designated as a lot on the three plan. It just had 131.
So, the original plan, we had a preliminary wetland study done, and the boundaries of that wetland changed. Like, I'm pretty sure this is the submittal for the preliminary, and there's no open space listed along the right. We planned to put a house there. Regardless of the number, we planned to have houses the entire stretch along the right boundary.
Ma'am, Ms. Sider, can I ask you to let him kind of finish his, thank you, thank you.
And so, the numbering, yes, I agree, the numbering wasn't great, and it was missing. There's a 98 in the middle, but those are all lot widths. Those are all, it wasn't open space, but because the wetland was discovered to be larger when we did our final, we created an open space on that side and had to shift lot lines accordingly as part of that, and it made that part of our submittal. So, we added an open space on the right boundary. It did shrink on the north, those two lots, because we widened those lots to allow for the side entry, the three-car garage. That was a reduction in open space. But again, we far exceed any open space requirements with straight zoning on this.
And just, if I can, Ms. Sider, just, we just want to make sure that when people, during the public comment period, that's, it just makes the process go better, and people can also hear what the concern is when you're up at the podium. Thank you, thank you. Any other further questions or comments by the commission members?
I have one. So, on that north side up there at the end, where the cul-de-sac is, where that strip was, but it's no longer there, you're saying that the trees will not be removed from there. Is that correct?
I couldn't guarantee, what I did state is, whether it was owned by the HOA or the resident, I can't guarantee they won't ever be removed.
Okay, but I'm sorry, in your building plan, your intention is not.
It's wide enough, it would only be removed as needed for, to build the home, or whatever. We don't have intentions of clearing that and leaving it wooded for screening for that homeowner that buys it. But depending on the width, like, if they do put a sidecar garage, they might have to take out part of them, still meeting all the code, but in order to do it. But it's not part of our clearing plan to remove them.
Okay, that's not the one.
Just the dead ones. The dead ones, though, right?
Yes, yeah. Any of the lots, which now is pretty much all the boundaries, we'll remove dead trees from a lot. We always do as a liability. And then, we have to, if we remove them for stormwater drainage in that.
So, I have a question. So, the drawing there that shows that clear area that you've, that you've eliminated, because you made the lot wider, was that what was approved by City Council?
So, that was part of the preliminary plan. However, this plan does, the plan that they have submitted for their final does substantially follow their preliminary plan.
Typically, with straight zoning, as long as it is substantially the same, and it still meets code, you're allowed to make slight modifications. If it was a PD, and we modified lot widths or changed things, then we would have to come back for another PD modification or PDD modification. That's my understanding of it. I'm not the attorney, or.
Any further questions or comments? Hey Seth, could you just kind of lay out for the folks who are here, just, or Matt, Matt, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
It's all right, I'll get it.
I didn't call you the wrong name for like an hour. My apologies, I'm sorry. Can you just lay out kind of the process for everybody in the room, just so they know kind of what next steps are?
So, the planning commission will, let me move to the slide. So, this slide, this slide is slightly wrong. So, again, like before, they've come in for a final development plan, and so, the planning commission will vote, you know, to approve, deny, or approve with modifications from that. And then, that's kind of the vote. You have anything to add?
Yeah. So, whatever decision this body makes this evening will be moved along to City Council at their July 17 meeting. If you guys vote to move it forward, you could table it. But if you make the decision to move it forward, it will go to council, and then council will have the option to, again, either modify, approve, or reject what Planning Commission has recommended. And it would only be for Phase Three.
Could we go, do we have the language from the staff recommendations from the preliminary plan? Do we have that language on the slide or anything?
I don't think so. Are you asking particularly about the trees?
No.
Okay.
Whatever the additional conditions were, because I think there were other staff conditions. Yeah, but it was just basic conditions.
Yeah, we'll go ahead, and if there's no further questions or comments among the commission members, I'll ask for a motion to recommend approval, approval with conditions, or disapproval to the applicant's request.
The existing conditions are just the two listed, or the staff-recommended conditions are just the two?
All right, this is the staff recommendation.
Right now. Right now.
Alright, do we hear a motion? To approve, approval with conditions, or disapprove the applicant's request?
I move that we approve with the staff recommendations and conditions and move forward.
Second.
Okay, all those, or Barb, you gonna call the roll?
Mr. Bills?
No.
Mr. Foley?
Yes.
Mr. Muncie?
Yes.
Ms. Pritchett?
Yes.
And Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And again, Amanda, will that be at the July 17th, City of Clayton council meeting?
It will.
Okay, okay, alright. Thank you, thank you. Thank you. Then the last item that we'll consider tonight is PC, PC 25-04, to consider the issue of a permanent ban on adult use cannabis businesses and operators such as processors, dispensaries, and/or cultivators within the City of Clayton.
Be careful going home. Thank you, Mr. Foley. So, I know you've been here a while, so I'll try and keep it compact. Let me just give you a little update as to what happened, background as to what happened previously, and where we are now and why we asked to come back before you this evening. So, in 2016, the state of Ohio legalized medical marijuana. Shortly after that time, the City of Clayton code allows for medical marijuana cultivation, processing, and dispensaries. Cultivation, processing, and dispensaries for medical marijuana are permitted uses in CMX and CMI. Medical marijuana processing and dispensaries are also permitted uses in the MSD districts. As you may recall, in November of 2023, issue two was on the ballot to enact Ohio revised Code 3780, which would legalize adult use cannabis, otherwise known as recreational marijuana in the state of Ohio. That passed. As part of the 3780 recreational use marijuana, there is a provision at 3780.25, which allows municipal corporations and townships to prohibit or limit the number of recreational marijuana operators within a municipal corporation. So that would include cultivators, processors, and distributors. So the current version of this law allows a municipal corporation to vote to prohibit it or limit the number within their jurisdiction. The current version of 3780 also provides that if a municipality has a dispensary, recreational dispensary within their jurisdiction, they are to receive 36% of the 10% tax on that goes to the host, that's what they call it, the host municipality. So that's what the current 3780 provides. In October 28th of 2024, there was a planning commission meeting where this was discussed, planning commission asked us to bring back some additional information. That was done at the November 25th, 2024 meeting, as you might recall, and at that point in time, planning commission voted to make a recommendation to council as follows, to allow no more than six adult use cannabis operators within the city, and of those six operators, two could be dispensaries and the remaining four could be cultivators or processors in the same districts as medical marijuana is currently allowed. That ordinance was presented to council at their January 16th, 2025 meeting, and that received an insufficient number of votes to reject or approve, so at that point in time it's pretty much dead. The most recent, the reason we're here today, the most recent version of the Ohio budget bill, which is due to become effective July 1st, so next Tuesday, contains a provision which repeals the provision I mentioned a minute ago, which allows municipalities to prohibit or limit the number of adult use operators within their jurisdiction. So if this passes, if this budget bill passes as is, and it looks like it's going to, from what we know now, then as of July 1st, even if the city wanted to, it would not be allowed to prohibit or limit the number of adult use operators within the city. Additionally, if this bill passes in its current form as of July 1st, the city would receive no tax money. They've repealed that provision as well. So as of July 1st, what this effectively would do would say, you can't limit the number of recreational operators in your city, and you're not going to get any tax money. Given that information, that's why I felt it might be prudent to bring this back before the planning commission and also city council, which is going to meet tomorrow. And that's why we requested your discussion and input with respect to passing legislation that would prohibit adult use operators within the city. Couple of things to note of importance. Even if you were to recommend prohibition and council were to adopt a prohibition, the city does still allow medical marijuana operators in those districts I mentioned. There is the 10B license, that's a 10B dual operators license, which as of right now, you can still get, the medical marijuana operators could basically apply for a 10B license, which would allow them to basically continue the adult use. They could do both medical and adult use. We wouldn't be able to stop that because that 10B allows, a license allows them to do it. So for instance, if we had a 10, if we have a medical marijuana dispensary or cultivator or processor and they get the 10B license, they're allowed to do the adult along with the medical, even though we prohibited adult. So I want to make that clear. Also, if it's prohibited, that does not prevent the home grow. People are still allowed to home grow. It also does not prevent research, we're not allowed to stop the research. So if somebody wanted to come in and do the research, we're not allowed to, to stop that as well. So that's why I wanted to bring this back, to get input and a recommendation from the planning commission, which can then go forward to the council tomorrow night. With that, I'll turn it over to you.
So, so we currently have a medical marijuana processor in Clayton?
We do, correct, on Main Street.
And what would this, so, are they limited to just doing that? You mentioned there's two options?
No, so, yeah, so the process, there's just a processor on Main Street, right. So the processor could apply for the 10B, which would allow them to process adult use, if that answers your question. Yeah. Yeah, yeah, well, in the conversation, I, when this came up before, as you may recall, I had spoken to an attorney at the Ohio Cannabis, and basically, the reasoning for allowing the medical marijuana facilities that are already established to get that 10B license so they can do the adult use is because of the capital input that they've already put forward. Yeah, they put the money into it, so they felt it was reasonable to allow them to do that. Now, I'm going to put this one caveat out there, is that I'm basing this on what we know now. I don't know what the Ohio legislature is going to do down the line. They could, you know, introduce some legislation later on that flips this around, I have no idea. I'm just basing my recommendations on what I know now.
I don't know if I need to use this or, okay, I'm sorry, is that we have a permanent ban?
Which, council could go back, if they wanted to, at some point in time and repeal the ban. And then, but at that point, they would have to allow them in, they couldn't restrict it, the limit, limit the number or restrict it. So, could council go back and repeal the ban? Yes, they could, but they couldn't limit the number, currently, what, what I know now. Now, the legislature could go back at some point in time and put this in and say, yeah, okay, now you can limit again. I don't know what they're going to do, I just have to base my recommendations on the information I have now. So I thought it was important because, like I said, as of July 1, even if you want to ban them, you won't be allowed to, and you're not going to get any of the tax money, so.
Which is what we had voted on, because we wanted to be able to have access to that tax money, yeah. Which makes me reticent about this, because again, we could possibly lose out on that because we don't know how the vote will go. I agree with you, I think that vote will be in the favor, in the direction, and we're going to possibly lose out. But then, things may change in a year or two, and so how, how difficult will that be? It, it seems that it's always a little bit more challenging when it comes back to municipalities to change things like this. And so by putting that permanent ban in place, it seems that it may be more challenging for us to change that and go back to where we were.
Yeah, I, I'm not going to disagree with, I mean, it just depends, excuse me, it just depends on if something else changes, you know what I mean? If, if the law changes again, then that information would have to be considered, I would think, but I, I see your point.
Go back to the facility that's already existing, Main Street Health, I think it's called, would they be able to expand the, within their existing building if they're processing adult?
I think that would depend on the zoning, if they're allowed to expand.
Yeah, I mean, it would depend on the zone, I mean, where they are now, yeah, they, they could. I mean, I don't know if, I don't know if it didn't come before this body, but if you'll recall, they actually had an option to purchase property from the city if they had gotten a distributor's license. So they were pursuing that for medical marijuana, which is permitted in MSD where they are now. So, I mean, they, they could potentially do that.
Okay, I just wondered, because I know they're, if they're, have the opportunity to process adult use marijuana, then, I didn't, I don't know if we, don't want to restrict that if they're already invested in the city.
Yeah, I don't, we, we couldn't, we couldn't. So even, even if this body makes the decision to ban adult use marijuana, and council does the same, they're basically grandfathered in, like Dan said, that they, since they already operate here, they can, they can operate with recreational as well.
But no, but no, no new after?
From what I know now, I'm just going to, you know, because it was surprising, I think, to a lot of people that they included this repeal of that provision.
Yes.
Which I think is like 5,000 pages.
Yes.
So, that was a little surprising.
But the provision is that municipalities can't place any restrictions, so then even if we pass something at the next council meeting, the new provision would nullify, or I guess, what's the, what's the, what's the effect that would have? So let's say, let's say we recommend that council approves it, state passes the bill restricting the municipality's ability to prohibit adult use cannabis facilities, then it doesn't matter what council does.
Yeah, because they're going to vote on it before the council meeting, right?
So we're having a special council meeting tomorrow to discuss this. It was advertised at the same time this meeting was advertised, so council can take this issue up, it was properly noticed.
But I think that, I think that conflict will be resolved in favor of the revised code, not this municipality's ordinance, right? Isn't that? So like, say for example, someone buys a piece of property, or someone buys a property with the intention to put a facility, adult use facility on, and the revised code says that we can't restrict someone's, we can't restrict the number of dispensaries in a municipality, and then they bring a lawsuit against the city for a taking or regulatory taking based on, I guess, that's where my concern comes into play, is, are we, are we trying to, I guess, is the intention that, or is the option that the, that a ban would survive a conflict with the revised code?
I think the ban would survive as long as it's adopted before July 1st, which is the effective date.
Is there, so will these 10B licenses continue to be available to people?
Far as I know. Far as I know, that's still in the, in the revised code.
But we only have the one to consider though, right?
We only have the one here.
You can't have someone actually obtain a new license, and then they would be able to then get the 10B? Would that be possible?
They could get a medical, yeah.
Yes.
Yes, they could get the license for the medical and then apply for the 10B dual.
Right. They could do that, mm-hmm, okay.
A tie in your hands, huh?
This is going to be stupid, but I'm just trying to, oh yeah, please.
Right now, with the medical license, with, with the one dispensary that I, I know of, do we actually receive any tax dollars from that?
We do, I mean, I don't know off the top of my head what they.
No, no, I was going to, yeah, so we do.
And to Sabrina's point, what changes, Martina, after July 1, about cities revenue with this?
If this goes through, yeah, if, if this goes through, if the Ohio budget bill is passed, knowing what I know now, as of July 1st, the city is not allowed to prohibit adult use operators within the city, the city is not allowed to limit the number of adult use operators within the city, and if, if they were to locate within your city after July 1st, you're not going to get any of the tax money. So you're not allowed to prohibit them from coming in, and you don't get any of the tax money.
Are they, are they only, what zoning districts are they permitted in? Are they only permitted in the RXD, or what's it called?
Marijuana. Cultivation, processing, and dispensaries are permitted in the CMX and the CMI, and processing and dispensaries are also allowed in the MSD.
The taxes then, that they would be taking away, would be on the sale of, well, the retail sale, yeah, not on the real estate though.
No.
Yeah.
Just as an editorial comment, like, almost 60% of the people, and I'm, by the way, this is not my number one issue, I never really was, I, I, I'm sure, I think I voted for it, but there was like almost 60% of the Ohio population who voted for this thing, and I, it feels to me like it kind of is going against a bit of the will of the people in some senses. And I, you know, it's interesting because, and I, and I will say, I remember when we addressed this issue at planning commission, and I'm sure the council members, you know, felt the same way, I mean, you have to learn a little bit, because we're not, you know, as far as I know, we're not scholars on this issue, but it seemed to me that the ability to, you know, I thought we did a good job, we said, we, and I remember thinking about the business on, what's the name, Dave, on North Main?
Main Street Health.
Main Street Health, and when I remember, they have a really good reputation, they're, they're good, good business, and I remember thinking, if they had an opportunity to responsibly grow their business, I thought that was a good thing. And so Sabrina, we talked about having, I remember, you know, producer, you know, producer, cultivator, processor, distributor, you know, and we had the, the theory was, we would, we would say, okay, if there were two of those entities that wanted to do that, that felt.
I didn't agree with them.
No, but I mean, it, it felt like, I, I just want to say, I give, I give, we put some mental work into it, and I, anyway, I just registered the editorial comment that I, I feel like, like the legislature isn't really respecting kind of what people did, but anyway, that's my.
To maybe go along.
If they pass it.
Well, the, the current language of the proposed bill, I guess, wouldn't prevent us from zoning restrictions on where, what districts these could be in. I mean, it would, sounds like a fight waiting to happen later on, but I guess, is there a way to maybe get closer to the numbers that we talked about before, using zoning regulations to a, an all-out ban?
Yeah, and that's, that's the issue, is that there's not enough time, because we were, this issue was going to be brought back to this body, but there's not enough time if we have that July 1 date that we're running up against, that if we don't do something now, we lose the ability to govern ourselves, and the state basically says, you're just going to allow it wherever.
Do you know how many, like, how much available property there would be for a dispensary or a grow operation actually? I think, I think we looked at it, like, there's a few spots, that's where, okay, there's a lot of ground here, but.
Sorry, I guess I, I'm torn because I'm focusing on the permanent ban, but I hear what you're saying, we could have an opportunity to go back and revise the language. what you're saying. We could have an opportunity to go back and revise the language. I think that probably is unlikely, just looking at what's happened in the past. But, but I do feel like we should take control of our own destiny. The whole point of that discussion that we had was to have the opportunity for business development and also to bring in additional revenue into the city. That was the point of it. It, it really was. And now that's looking to be stripped from us anyway.
And like I said, if somebody has a medical license, they could still apply for the ten B and tag on for the adult use.
Right.
So there would still be that, but you're not going to get the tax money for it.
I want to make sure, Martina, you're, can you state your recommendation to us, just so we have, so we kind of come back to what, to what that is?
From a legal perspective, yeah, from a legal perspective, based upon what I know now, I would recommend a prohibition.
Are you saying, are you saying that in order to control our own destiny as opposed to the state?
I think that's what it boils, yeah. I think that's what it boils down to, is do you want to control? Yeah. Right. Do you want to control your own destiny, or do you just want to go along with what the state is telling you, you have to do as of July first?
Right.
I think that's, that's what it boils down to in my mind.
We'll make property and income tax, though. It's not like we're not making anything, but...
Any further? Income tax, yeah, yeah, sure, yeah. Any further?
So you want us to vote on this? Is this an actual, or?
Vote on a recommendation to council.
Yes. Reluctantly, I, I do, I do agree, we probably should vote on having a permanent ban. Make a motion, that, that we move to motion, to have a permanent ban on adult-use cannabis dispensaries, producers, cultivators, processors, and dispensaries within the City of Clayton.
Okay, it's been properly moved. Do we have a second? A second. All right, Barb?
Mr. Bills?
Aye.
Foley?
Aye.
Mr. Muncie?
No.
Ms. Pritchett?
Aye.
And Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Thank you, every...
I make a motion, re-adjourn. I move that we adjourn.
Do we, we have a second? Okay, all right. All those are favor?
Aye.